Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, February 20, 2024. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. Mr. Mosley, if you would please come forward. Mayor Ganey, do you please come forward? Thank you. Ah, Director Walters, I didn't see. He just walked in. Also, please come forward.
Let me button up. I got two people that wear bow ties now. You know what I mean? I act like y'all ain't got clip-ons. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. How you doing?
Good morning.
Listen, um, you know, it's always a pleasure for me to recognize any high school that wins a championship because the hard work and dedication of our children should always go recognized. And there's some words that I'm gonna say before I do the proclamation, but I may have to cut out early because the Vice President is here and I know that I have to be here, but I'm gonna tell you right now, you in good hands with the new council person from the Ninth Councilmatic District, Councilman Kohari Mosley. So I'm gonna have, yeah, give it up, give it up. Can Sylvia Wilson come on up too? Is any other school board members here? That, all school board members come up. Man, I shit out the zone. So I want them to say some things and then I'm gonna come back and say something, then I'm gonna read a proclamation. Um, but Dr. Superintendent Walters, thank you. You know what you like, Dr. Superintendent Walters? But anyway, I just wanna say thank you because without your partnership, this isn't even a reality. And you and I have spoken in the past about how we need to recognize our kids. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kohari Mosley and he will call the other speakers up, then I will come back at the end. Councilman Kohari Mosley.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we give the mayor another round of applause for the great leadership, the leadership and the love leadership to the city. I'm gonna be super brief. Um, you know, this is getting to be a routine thing, handing out championship jackets and trophies and proclamations to the Westinghouse Bulldogs, which is unique for me, you know, as a very proud Perry Commodore, uh, who has, who's traded in my loyalties of the blue and white for the blue and gold. I'm proud to be, you know, what I would hope to be an honorary Bulldog over the last year or so of handing out all these accolades. Uh, so let's give a round of applause to the Westinghouse Bulldogs. So I'm super honored, you know, I grew up, you know, my father, um, who's at the right age of 97, who wrote, uh, for the Courier as a sports writer in the 1950s. I grew up on a lot of stories about Coach Imperial and the great football legacy of the Westinghouse Bulldogs. And even my senior year at Perry, you know, we got smashed by the Bulldogs like 55-0 in the rain down at South Stadium. So, you know, I got to experience the greatness of Westinghouse football too. So I'm really honored to be here, um, to help deliver this proclamation to y'all. I want to bring up School Board Director Sylvia Wilson.
Always great to be asked to speak when you didn't know you were going to. Um, I'm just pleased to be here. I'm pleased to represent Westinghouse. Um, I've been a proud supporter, not of just this team, but of the school itself. They get a lot of negative comments and a lot of people don't understand what's going on in the school. And I think that through the coaches, Coach Dante and the rest of his coaching staff and what they've done with these boys is absolutely an example of what goes on in Westinghouse, but has not been actually, um, spread as worth, communicated to the rest of the city. But we will continue to grow as a school. These young men have done such a wonderful job. Um, I'm so proud of them. I'm proud of what the coaches have done with them over the years. I've been following them all along. And, um, and again, it's not just about sports, it's about how they are as young men, as humans, as, as, as those who care for others. And so I'm just really pleased and proud to be just a little teeny part of being here to honor them today.
Thank you, Director Wilson. Our next speaker will be Director Devin Tyler-Farrow.
Good morning. Didn't need to speak words, but, um, I'm so thankful to be able to celebrate. You guys have worked extremely hard, um, not just, um, at being the best in this school district as a football team, um, but being the best as athletes, um, that are students. And so it is just an honor and a privilege to be able, um, to celebrate you. Any chance that I get and that we get as a school board, um, because you all work so hard on the field and off the field, um, I have no doubt in my mind, um, that you have been set up for greatness, um, to be able to do even greater things than probably you ever, um, could or would imagine. Um, and it's thanks to, um, the incredible coaching staff, um, the staff of the school, your athletic director, um, you know, everybody, um, every adult that plays a part, um, in your, in your greatness. Um, it's an honor to be able to celebrate that greatness today. So thank you.
Our next speaker is gonna be School Board President Gene Walker.
So it's no surprise, uh, just like Mayor Ganey, it's hard for me to say really wonderful things about Westinghouse being a Peabody guy, but...
Yeah, yeah!
I gotta throw that. No, I'm just joking. You know what? Um, over the past couple of years, uh, under the, the leadership of Coach Dante, uh, you guys, uh, staff and players, uh, have shown what it means to be excellent, not just once, but over an extended period of time. Uh, and that, that, those lessons that you've learned, uh, will serve you long after you've stopped playing football. All of us who are athletes know, or were athletes know, that you will spend so much more of your time off the field, uh, more so than you did on the field. And so what you've learned on the field should translate into what you do going forward, whether it's school or trade school or, or workforce or military, or whatever it is you choose to do. So take those lessons, those lessons of excellence, of discipline, of getting up early and hitting the gym and running your laps and doing all those things, take them back into the classroom, take them into your community, continue to be the positive change that not just Westinghouse deserves and needs to see, but, uh, the whole city of Pittsburgh. So we are so proud of you. Uh, next year, you'll get those guys from South Columbia or Southern Columbia, uh, 'cause they're not ready for what's coming. 'Cause, you know, uh, the thing that we learn, you know, winning is easy, but it's in defeat where we learn our biggest lessons. And so I hope you guys took something from that that fuels the fire for what comes next for you. Uh, and as a school board, uh, as a member of this, this body of nine, we are so proud of you. Uh, and keep doing great things, Westinghouse. Go Bulldogs!
And our next speaker, before we bring the mayor back up, is Superintendent Wayne
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and, uh, special thanks to City Council President Lavelle for giving us this space to celebrate our Westinghouse Bulldogs and the mayor and our board members who are here supporting our students. But I also want to recognize the new principal of Westinghouse, a former, uh, well, a Westinghouse alum, Dr. Virginia Hill. She's in here, she's in the house, so... And so we welcome her back. And a mentor once said to me that nothing in life is so complicated that it cannot be achieved by discipline and hard work. Westinghouse Bulldogs, you represent discipline and you represent hard work. And so those are the two pillars that I see that lead you to excellence, when you're well-disciplined and you work hard. To the coaching staff, because you will not be where you are without quality leadership. So Coach Dante and his entire team, thank you for illustrating what it looks like, for investing in our children, because if we're not invested in our children, we cannot be invested in our future. I'll say it again, if we're not invested in our children, we cannot be invested in our future. And so I thank you for that support. Students, you should hold your head high and be very proud because it is your day of celebration, it is your day of accomplishment, it is your day of acknowledgement. And so it's a special day, and I hope you internalize this space. Two consecutive times going to the state championship. And so the saying is the third time's the charm. Make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And now I'll bring back, uh, our mayor, Mayor E. Ganey.
Westinghouse, I just wanna say I'm proud of you. And to each one of you players, I wanna say something. It's amazing when I go across the city and I hear people that's not even from home will say, "I wanna play for Westinghouse." That's the culture that you sow. That no matter where they come from in this city, they wanna come play for Westinghouse 'cause they see the greatness that you did. Without you, they wouldn't want that. And so for every player that went back to back to back that helped that happen, stand up. Come on, stand up. Westinghouse! Stand up. Westinghouse, everyone, come on. Westinghouse, stand up. Yeah. I want, oh, hey, stay standing up. I wanna say, I wanna, I thank you for changing the culture. A school that probably don't have more than, what, two, three other people? Less than that? Every single year, the smallest, that's why I'm saying, it don't take the biggest, it take the biggest ones that got hurt, the back to back to back to win championships. And I wanna congratulate each and every one of you. Hold your head up high. Because of you, you made Westinghouse something that everybody wanna go to. And I wanna thank you for that. Stand up proudly. Coach Dante and your coaching staff, come on up front. Come on up front. Principal Hill, come on front. Come on, come on with him, principal. Come on. Come on. I can't thank you enough, Coach Dante and your coaching staff. Because Frederick Douglass said that if you train up young, young people, young men, young children to be men, we don't have to worry about preparing broken men. And you have trained up a great deal of young men to be able to go out in the world and make a living for themselves, not just on the field, but off the field. Because you're example of being the executive director of the Trade Institute, you're example of being a phenomenal coach on the field, as why these young men here today are able to do the work they do. Now therefore being resolved that I, Mayor of the city, recognize Westinghouse is black to the best of times. I gotta get my clothes on, I gotta get my shoes on quick. Can you walk with me up the stage? Hey, most of you are in there. You're good.
And, um, and before we move to the next part of our agenda, I did wanna bring up Coach Dante Green to say a few words, as well as Principal Hill. Uh, hey, hey, Mr. Mayor, I, I know you turning it up in the back, but we got, we All right, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now we're gonna get back to the program and we're gonna bring up the coach of Westinghouse football, uh, Dante Green. And I just wanna say something real quick before he says his words. I'm really proud, I'm gonna be in Washington DC on Monday, um, at Senator Casey's office. He's gonna give out Black History Month awards and one of the awardees is gonna be Coach Green. So let's give him a round of applause for that.
Uh, good morning and thank you, uh, City Council, uh, Mayor Ganey for this amazing honor. Um, it is becoming sort of a tradition to be here every year and we're so grateful, um, and, and proud. Uh, just real quick, a few things that I wanted to say. The first thing is, I'm just so proud of each and every one of you guys in the back of the room in a black jersey. I know, we tell you guys all the time, uh, but we see coaches, administration in the school, we see what it takes to get to Friday, we see what it takes from, from January to June to be able to celebrate in December. So I just wanna let you guys know publicly how much we appreciate you and appreciate the hard work, dedication and sacrifice that you guys exemplify every single day, year after year after year. So I would love to just give our, our guys just one more round of applause if possible. As we all know, um, this can never be a, a one man or one woman show. Um, it takes a village of people to make something like this happen, uh, because, to be honest, we shouldn't be here if you listen to everybody else. Um, back in 2015, 2016, when the Wilkinsburg and Westinghouse merger was happening, there was people saying that would not work. How can you bring two communities, three communities, even four communities together under one school and have order? But we proved that wrong. Um, we, yep. They say a city league team who is under-resourced, the pay, that the coaches are, are severely underly paid, uh, the, the facilities aren't up to par, how can a team like this ever make it as far as being one of the, one of the best teams in the state of Pennsylvania? Again, we proved them wrong. But all those things, none of those things happen, uh, without a, a strong village who is committed, um, to the development of our young people. So I just wanna take a second to shout out all of our coaches, um, all of administration, all our team, um, Ms. Kenya who works tirelessly. I mean, when I say tirelessly, I mean tirelessly. To make sure that our boys get what they need, all the, the school staff who stays after school, um, we, we even had school staff last year helping some of our kids learn how to drive. I mean, just the commitment of the people that we are blessed to have around us is just absolutely amazing. And then last but not least, before I, I give it to, uh, Dr. Hill, um, there's a group of people who never get any shine for what they do. And I wanted to make sure, uh, that today, that we give honor and, and give, uh, our custodial staff the, the flowers that they deserve. I mean, the amazing work that they do to make sure that we have a safe environment. To make sure that we have a safe and clean environment, um, you know, staying late when, when I know they have families they wanna get to. So please, I wanna shout out, um, to Gus Yancy, who was our lead custodian, uh, Mark and the entire crew at Westinghouse because they are the best custodial staff in the state of Pennsylvania. So thank you guys. Thank everybody here. Again, thank you, City Council. Um, thank you, Brother E. for, for always making sure that we're on point. Um, and, and thank everybody here for, for being behind us. And, uh, the, the work isn't done. Uh, we're gonna continue, we're gonna keep, continue to fight and we'll continue to be consistent. So without further ado, our new principal, Dr. Hill.
Good morning. I am so grateful that I get to be the principal of Westinghouse High School. Wasn't asked, but I thank you for allowing me, Dr. Walters, to come and serve in this capacity. I just wanted to give honor to our council members that are here today, as well as the board members of PPS. Thank you so much for being here today to honor our students and our coaches. Coaches, I just want you to know that no one understands how difficult it is to coach, but I do. And I thank you for all that you've done for our children, how you've served them, how you drive them from hither to tither to make sure that they're successful. Whatever they need, you take care of these young men and it's deeply appreciated. I'm so excited, young men, to learn about the program. I heard about the program when I first met you and I see how you respond with the program. And it's something that we need to extend into the entire student body because you are an embodiment and an example of what we strive to be. I'm so grateful for what you've done and for the positivity that you've brought to our school. You are our heroes and we appreciate and value you. Thank you so much, City of Pittsburgh, for acknowledging our young men. We are so excited and we look forward to going, getting that third championship this year. Love you all.
Thank you, everyone. And we're gonna turn the deus back to, uh, Council President Lavelle. Thanks, everyone. And just give them another round of applause.
Uh, Councilman Mosley, I believe you have another proclamation as well?
Can the family of Ernest Bay come up? Carrying on, uh, the Westinghouse thing, we have another Bulldog that we're gonna honor. And, uh, this is, uh, this is special for me. This is my, actually my first official proclamation, uh, as a member of council. So this, this is a very proud moment. Um, so we'll get to it. Um, so whereas Ernest Bay has been a part of the Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania local art scene for over 40 years, Mr. Bay's talents were noticed early in his art career in 1973 while attending his alma mater, Westinghouse High School. And whereas Mr. Bay retired from Equitable Gas after 37 years of service and has had opportunities to work with the late Vernell Lilly, founder and artistic director of Kuntu Repertory Theater, recreated many unique art pieces. And whereas in 1995, Mr. Bay was named Artist of the Year by the Champions Association, Mr. Bay has received prestigious Trailblazer, the prestigious Trailblazers Award for community service in 2000, was also commissioned by Mark Clayton Souders of Pittsburgh Playwrights to design the piano that would be used in the August Wilson Theater Production Piano Lesson. And whereas Mr. Bay has created artwork for Pittsburgh Steeler Joey Porter and former NBA star Chris Webber, his portfolio also expands to the collection of Erykah Badu and the rapper Common. Whereas Ernest Bay is an accomplished multimedia artist proficient in watercolor and acrylic, Mr. Bay is also a master wood carver and jewelry designer. Mr. Bay is a devoted community activist and active member of Mad Dads of Greater Pittsburgh. And whereas Ernest is a devoted husband, father and grandfather who still holds his late father's advice with him every day. Let the ancestors speak through you and that will be your legacy. So now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does declare his 70th birthday, February 22nd, 2024, as Ernest Bay Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley. I didn't know this was your first, so it's certainly an honor for me. Uh, as he said, I'm a Bulldog from the door. I've been able to get, receive a lot of honors, but in 2018, when I was awarded the Westinghouse Wall of Fame, that was it for me. I mean, I was so proud to walk those halls as a young man. And then to be on that Wall of Fame was just the greatest day of my life. And with that being said, I'm so glad that my mother's here at 95 and my, and my dear wife, who is a council, who actually works in the course system here, and my brother, who, that last championship in 71, he was that Bulldog that I was always so proud of, you know. So we're, I just accept this award humbly and thank you so much, Councilman Mosley.
And members, if you could stay put real quick, um, if all the Westinghouse Bulldogs would please come forward for a picture with the members of council and Councilman Mosley. Fellas, to your right. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Yeah, she's going to read it for us. Just wait.
Ah, okay.
I broke my glasses. Tara, I hope you brought some excitement with you. Come on up with whoever you're here with. I've known Tara for a few years. She lives in our district, but she's done so many amazing things for people, including Save a Life Today Pittsburgh. She did a drive, a collection, toy drive, and was able to make sure that a ton of kids were able to receive a lot of gifts for Christmas because of the collection that she did. And she didn't just do it in one place, she did it in multiple places. And she does only, every year, she's doing something for somebody, her and her boyfriend. Is he here?
He is.
Tom, come up.
He got the door, too.
Come up, you have no choice. Come on up. But I just want to say, the two of them together have done amazing things, not only for kids in our community and across the city of Pittsburgh, but also for people of domestic violence survivors, giving a lot to women's centers or women's shelters. And I just want to thank them for everything that they do and acknowledge the work they do. But I broke my reading glasses, so Councilwoman Strasburger has graciously always steps in to help District Two out. She's going to read the proclamation. Thank you.
Whereas Tara Kush did not have a lot growing up, but when she did, she did have the belief that you should always try to help somebody in need when you could. And whereas, as Tara's small business grew and she became more successful, she wanted to give back in some way. In 2023, she began a toy drive around the holiday for disadvantaged children. She was able to secure a box truck and had donation boxes at her nail salon and two other locations. Between all locations, it wasn't long before they were able to fill the box truck. And whereas, the toy donations she collected helped Save a Life Today Pittsburgh distribute toys to over 100 low-income families during their annual Christmas event. Because of its success, she plans on continuing the toy drive annually. And whereas, in addition to her toy drive, Tara's business helped feed the unhoused for Thanksgiving, where they served 67 people in 2022 and close to 100 in 2023 throughout downtown Pittsburgh and the North Side. And whereas, Tara's goal for 2024 is to open up a safe spot for people in need to be able to come to a safe environment to ask for help with daily essentials such as food, clothing, and shelter. And whereas, she believes that anything people do to help others matters, whether big or small. As she acts upon what she believes, she is proving her conviction. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Tara Kush for her selfless acts of kindness toward those less fortunate. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, February 20, 2024, to be Tara Kush Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve this in all proclamations?
So move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proclamations are approved. Thank you.
I also want to acknowledge the businesses, and you can help me out here, that helped put collection boxes up. Blinkies on Nobles Town Road, Sammy's on Nobles Town Road, Alexion's in Green Tree, Rook Station.
Yep, and my client.
And your client. What's your name of your salon?
It's just Nails by Tara.
Nails by Tara, and it's out in Robinson, right?
I'm trying to find a location in Crafton.
She's trying to find a location in Crafton Heights. Okay? Because if she moves to Crafton Borough, I'm going to drag her across the line to Crafton Heights. So anyway, I want you both to say a few words.
And I just want to thank everybody that did donate, and I want to thank all the businesses that donated with me, too. And I just want to thank you for acknowledging me. And I truly believe that if an act of kindness could help somebody brighten their day, that everybody should act on it. You never know what somebody's going through, and a little act of gesture, a kind gesture, could help somebody's day. And just thank you.
I would like to thank council for having us here with this opportunity. I'm always looking to give back to my community, the inner city where I came from. And thank you, Tara, for coming up with this good idea. Ms. Kail Smith, for the opportunity. And everybody, have a good day.
If members want to get a photo, they actually help people across the region, so. And Josh, we'll have to give you a separate one. And you're mentioned in the proclamation, but you do a lot of the work, too, behind the scenes. So I want to make sure. I know you say that, but I want to make sure we acknowledge you separately.
And I believe we have one to be read into the record from Councilwoman Kail Smith? And Councilman Wilson? Sorry.
Councilwoman Kail Smith and Councilwoman Wilson present, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, February 26, 2024, to be Kevin Quigley Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before a city council and profanity is not permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Alex Goldblum.
Good morning, Councilman, and thank you for letting me speak. Hello, my name is Alex Goldblum. I'm a member of Filmmakers Against Occupation, a group of Israeli and Palestinian filmmakers who have signed a petition to the Israeli Knesset opposing the military occupation of the West Bank and Gaza. I've been conducting independent research on the Israeli-Palestinian conflict since 2010, visiting Israel and the West Bank in 2010 and 2011. 1,200 Israelis were killed by Hamas and Islamic Jihad militants in southern Israel on October 7, 2023, in a shocking atrocity that has left the public traumatized and grieving on a national scale. Since the Israel Defense Forces' aerial bombing campaign and ground assault of Gaza began over three months ago, over 28,600 men, women, and children have been killed in the Israel Defense Forces' war of aggression. The overwhelming force used by the Israeli government and IDF in Gaza is an unspeakable catastrophe. 10% of the children in Gaza now suffer from acute hunger and starvation. People have resorted to eating animal feed in Gaza because of the lack of food. Now 1.7 million Gazans are cornered in the southern Gaza Strip in Rafah. The Prime Minister of Israel, Benjamin Netanyahu, has ordered his general, Herzl Halevi, to attack Rafah, which according to Netanyahu is the last bastion of Hamas, where four Hamas battalions are still standing, hidden in a network of underground tunnels on the Egyptian border. Despite all this madness and mayhem and chaos going on in the Holy Land, Hamas is still standing, and Israel is still assaulting the Gaza Strip. According to Israeli hostage negotiator and conflict resolution expert, Dr. Gershon Baskin, you can't defeat Hamas militarily because you cannot kill an ideology. You can only change an ideology by offering new, better ideas. I'm in favor of a resolution by the City Council of Pittsburgh demanding a ceasefire for many reasons: humanitarian reasons, national security reasons, and moral reasons. A ceasefire is the only way to secure the release of the estimated 135 Israeli, American, and international hostages being held by Hamas in Gaza. I want to believe in an Israel that lives up to our highest Jewish values, not one that places no value on human life. I started a documentary arts and news project called The West Bank Project with the stated goal of bringing peace and focus. And I hope you will introduce a will of council in support of a ceasefire resolution.
Thank you, your time is up. Your time is up, sir. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, PhD, a Master of Divinity at Pittsburgh Theological Seminary. There is no Pittsburgh Theological University Council. Summa, also Hebrew Prize. I was a Presbyterian minister for 10 years. Seoul, Korea, Azia de Mexico, Mexico. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Academy of Religion, the American Historical Association, and the African Studies Association. I'm a specialist in relating cleeg to Malcolm to Martin King. My African-American mentor was Dr. Sam Roberts. A council concern or council concerns are to be pro-diversity and pro-inclusion when it comes to religion, RLM critique, region analysis. I'm going to give a music reference, Waiting in Vain by Marley, but Atlantic's on Marley. 2015 to 2024, there have been more than 10 proclamations for Christians of Black African descent. And Mr. Lavelle sponsored a proclamation for Presbyterian Christians of Black African descent, 13 February 2024. Critique info, intel from Asia, Korean Shosan, Hangul, Ayo. There are more than 5 million Presbyterians of Asian descent in the Republic of Korea, Dehan Minggu. Less than 2 million Presbyterians total in the United States of America. The largest Presbyterian church in the world, 100,000 members, is in Seoul, South Korea, Myung Il Dong Presbyterian Church. It's not in the United States, but what is in the United States, Pittsburgh Korean Presbyterian Church on Ellsworth Avenue. Why no proclamation? Council and mayor, anti-diversity, religion is ethnocentrist, racism is a possibility. Latin American, Mexico, Espanol. 2 million Presbyterians of Latin American descent are in the United States of Mexico, Estados Unidos, Mexicanos. The largest Presbyterian denomination in the world is in Mexico, not in the United States. But what is in the United States in Pittsburgh is Iglesia Cristiana Tabaculó de Oración on Methel Street. Why no proclamation? Presbyterians of Asian, especially Korean and Latin American, especially Mexican descent, are vibrant, local, and worldwide community actors, but they are not particularly useful to activities of entities like the Pittsburgh Political Empowerment Group, who stress the necessity with Black voters in churches to vote for individuals of Black African descent. That is anti-inclusionary, that is exclusionary. Why, to quote Ella, "Why can't you behave?"
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Dave Lettrich.
Hello, thank you. My name is Dave Lettrich. I'm the founder and executive director of Bridge to the Mountains and Bridge Outreach, a North Side-based organization that works, operates, and serves our city and county's population of individuals experiencing homelessness. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to express some of my views relative to a lot of the conversations and movements that have been occurring within the city and within city council around resources to help alleviate the challenges for those experiencing homelessness within our city. I've seen a lot of really good thought and effort and research and consideration put forth towards the direction of creating managed communities outside, within zoning districts within the city. And I think that they, I think that there are merits there, and I believe there are challenges there as well. Overall, the most important thing that comes to mind as it relates to this, those conversations are occurring within the context of zoning. And I believe that you, as a governing body here in the city, have identified the right spot zoning for Allegheny County, for the city of Pittsburgh. We are really good at a number of different things. Our city is recognized worldwide for its innovation and creation of street medicine. And we are very efficient and very effective as a continuum of care when it comes to our homeless services and our coordinated entry and our supportive housing programs. There are ways that we can be more effective, but we've always been very efficient. And that's why our numbers, even though we've had an increase, continue to be so low compared to other cities around the country. There is one thing, one thing, that I would ask city council to really consider, and that is focusing in on adopting zoning changes that can give us access to hundreds and hundreds of vacant, turnkey-ready residential spaces around this city. The, there is.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Ikahana Hal Malkina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikahana Hal Malkina. I am the Grand Inca at the Iroquois Confederacy of Aborigine American People. I too would like to congratulate the students at Westinghouse High School for your wonderful achievements and your recent performance at the Druid Concert. They both good and delighted to see the youth. The subject that I would like to cover today is Shot Spotter. Recently, I heard an interview with Anthony Coghill supporting the Shot Spotter, their new technology, sound thinking and technology. Myself and others like Rick Swartz, who's highly respected in the city of Pittsburgh, do not support the Shot Spotter technology, or it is a reactionary tool to crime. It's not a deterrent to crime. It costs the city over $1.1 million annually to run this technology in the city. That hasn't been proven to solve any crime. After the shots are fired, the damages that the old technology, which is simply a cell phone or a house landline, works just fine. And it doesn't cost the city of Pittsburgh any additional funds. These funds will be utilized to help with crime reduction. These funds should be utilized to help with crime reduction as opposed to reactionary tool that says, hey, a gun shot went off, when typically 30 or so people will call you and tell you that a gun was fired at this specific location. Shot Spotter can't tell you that there's someone in an alley riddled with bullets. It won't tell you their exact location. So tell me how Shot Spotter is helping this city solve any crime. I wish you could be in on that. Cities like Chicago have already done away with Shot Spotter technology, and Houston is about to follow. I think we need to do the same and not wastefully spend money for false alarms that don't help anything. It's very problematic to continue this technology. And already, Chicago has reported that that technology exceeds $10 million because the cost is not just one flat rate. Revert back to using the technology that we know that works. This will not mitigate crime. We have to invest in problem-solving techniques that will reduce and prevent crime, like the pilot program that was introduced by Councilman Lovell that would financially support single mothers because we know crime is directly related to poverty. So we do want to address that with the proper measures, not with this technology that costs the city over $1 million. Thank you for hearing my voice today. Have a wonderful day. In my cowl, if you would.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. You will also be given three minutes to speak. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak?
Hello. My name is Sarice Taylor. Apparently, that's not true. Somebody changed my name. Apparently, I'm supposed to be here on this board. How, where, I don't know, but we're going to find out who I am and where I'm supposed to be. I was led here by God, and I'm here. If anybody knows who I really am, please come forward. The longer this mystery is a mystery and you hold on to that information, it's going to, it's not going to be good. It's not going to be good. I come in peace. I'm not out for vengeance or anything like that. I just want the truth, and it will, it will come out eventually. I just want to say thank you. Apparently, I'm supposed to be dead. Somebody said that I died, but I didn't. I'm here. I wanted everybody to see me and know that I'm not dead. Whoever Sarice Taylor is, that's the name they gave me when they changed my real name. Because I don't know what my real name is, they're trying to use that information against me. And whoever is doing that, stand in it, because I'm a stand in who I am. God is love, not hate. It's a real powerful message. It doesn't take an hour to preach it. I stand on his love and his promises. That's what I stand on. Right now, I'm living on the favor of God. My communication is being blocked. Every device that I get is being hacked. I threw my computer in this, over the Seventh Street Bridge because they kept hacking into it so many times. When I went to the library to find out about this council, about this board, the computer I was on was, the time that I had on it was ended deliberately. I'm literally library hopping for privacy to find out what's really going on. I don't know, but it seems like every time I get close to the truth, my communication is being blocked. I can't talk to anybody. I can't call anybody. Make it make sense, somebody, please try to find out what's going on with me. Like I said, the more I dig into the situation, the more I'm blocked, you see?
Thank you very much.
Confirmation of what I'm talking about.
Any other speakers? Any other speakers? Seeing none, our next order of business will be presentations, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
One new paper, Mr. President.
Sir, I think that's final action.
Okay.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
You have one.
This mine? Supposed to have one, but I don't.
Apologize. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross. He does?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought so.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill 155, Resolution Amending Resolution 248 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership to provide an ambassador program to assist police with non-criminal matters in the Central Business District by increasing the approved amount by $600,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,200,000 over two years.
Now, Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President, thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill 156, Resolution Amending Resolution 630 of 2020, which authorized the city's Department of Public Safety to enter into relevant agreements to purchase document management software from Power DMS, Inc., to extend the agreement an additional year for an increase of $34,317.77.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kohari Mosley presents Bill 157, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 5255 Butler Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15201, at no cost to the city. Bill 158, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 220 North Shore Drive, Pittsburgh, PA 15212, at no cost to the city. And Bill 159, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for multiple properties on Center Avenue at no cost to the city.
And Councilwoman Teresa Kalesmith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Teresa Kalesmith presents Bill 160, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or the Director of the Management, the Office of Management and Budget to enter into agreements in individual amounts of $10,000 or less with performers, instructors, artists, referees, and persons with specialized skills in connection with the department's recreational and instructional programs and special event services. Bill 168, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into financial and in-kind sponsorship agreements valued at $5,000, $5,000 or less for the City Parks Office of Special Events 2024 season. Bill 162, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to enter into sponsorship agreements for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival. The sponsorship terms will provide a total value of $10,000. And Bill 172, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 41 of 2024, entitled, Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through K, 268 Lombard Street, 2431 Wiley Avenue, 746 Clarissa Street, 4918 Rosetta Street, 123 Overbeck Street, 149 Henderson Street, 1400 Tumbo Street. As to add, Items Zero, Isoline Street, 510 Stratmore Avenue, 512 Stratmore Avenue, 514 Stratmore Avenue.
And Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 163, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Carlo University in an Amount Not to Exceed $113,400 to Support the Creation of a Wellness Index for Black Women. Bill 164, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Fisher &amp; Phillips LLC for Legal Services in Connection with a Collection Bargaining Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $162,660.50 over one year. Bill 165, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Thomas Thompson Hafer LLP for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $2,565.63 over one year. Bill 166, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Network Deposition Services for Certified Copies of Transcripts for an Amount Not to Exceed $11,986.74 over one year. Bill 168, Resolution Amending Resolution 861 of 2023, Effective December 27, 2023, which authorized appropriations and salaries of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2024 fiscal year, beginning January 1, 2024, to add position, to add positions that report to the Department of Parks and Recreation as authorized by Ordinance 35 of 2023, effective December 16, 2023. The proposed expenditures of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2024 fiscal year are hereby appropriated in the sum of $9,852,848. And Bill 167, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Jacqueline Lane in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Property as a Result of a Pittsburgh Bureau of Police SWAT Incident on August 23, 2023 in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,978 over one year.
And Councilman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure, Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All good.
Being to my right, I couldn't. I thought that was a...
And then Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill 169, Resolution Providing for the Designation of an Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that structure, that certain structure known as Sal's Barber Shop, located at 712 Brookline Boulevard in Brookline in the 19th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
And then finally, myself.
Council President R. Daniel Lovell presents Bill 170, Communication from Kyle Chintalopoly, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the Period Ending December 31, 2023.
We need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Does that move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the bill has been received and filed. The next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburg, Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 150, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for February 14, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 110, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 88 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Bromberg and Associates LLC for Effective Communication Services for City Meetings and Events by exercising the contract option to extend the term for one year, adding the city clerk as a signatory and increasing the total spend by $150,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $478,976. Bill 111, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle, PLLC, for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $95,767.99 over one year. Bill 112, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Thomas Root, Thompson Reuters West for Legal Subscription Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $7,034.19 over one year. Bill 113, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kittleson LLC for Expert Witness Services in Connection with Two Matters filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an Amount Not to Exceed $14,675.33. Bill 114, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kroll Associates, Inc., for Expert Witness Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $24,008.13 over one year. Bill 115, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant payable in favor of National League of Cities for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $18,499. And Bill 120, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 42 of 2024, entitled, Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed For Sale by Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, Items A through N, 2825 Webster Avenue, 2823 Webster Avenue, 5163 Hillcrest Street, 415 North Graham Street, 6506 Meadow Street, 7042 Kedron Street, 1050 Wheeler Street, Zero Oakwood Street, Zero Oakwood Street, 5874 Douglas Street, 516 Cedarhurst Street, 3003 Ziffer Avenue, 419 Marshall Avenue. As to add, Item 229 Shetland Avenue.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye. When your name is called, those in opposed, please vote no. All those in, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kalesmith?
I'm abstaining from everything today because I don't have time to go through all this.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes and one abstention.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. Now, if we can have Councilman Wilson on behalf of Councilwoman Warwick.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 151, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for February 14, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 139, Resolution Amending Resolution 838 of 2023, which provided for an amendment, for an agreement or agreements with MS Consultants, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the California Avenue Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $844,796.1, reimbursable at 100%. This amendment adjusts only the accounts authorized to enter into this contract at no additional cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, please vote aye. When your name is called, those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kalesmith?
Abstaining. Abstain.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstention.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. Now, Councilman Charlin presents Committee of Human Resources.
Let's try this again, Mr. President.
Councilperson Robert Charlin presents Bill 152, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for February 14, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 98, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with Optum Connect Your Care for Services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Flexible Spending Account Program for some not to exceed $40,500 over three years and for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill 99, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with P&amp;A Group for Services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, COBRA, program for a, some not to exceed $15,000 over one year and for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill 100, Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPOETC, required assessment and evaluation of public safety candidates, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $95,000. And Bill 101, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with Work Partners Life Solutions for Services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Employee Assistance Program for some not to exceed $49,500 over one year and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye. When your name is called, those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Abstain.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstention.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill 153, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February 14, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2089, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning Code, Article V, Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses at Section 911.02, Use Table and Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access at Section 914.02, Off-Street Parking Schedules, and Adding Section 912.09. B, Child, Childcare Accessory Use at Chapter 912, Accessory Uses and Structures, all to amend childcare uses and standards. Bill 121, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by removing Poise Foundation as a grant recipient along with people of origin rightfully loved and wanted poor law and authorizing a subsequent agreement for a total cost of $40,000. And Bill 122, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program to correct the JDE job number for St. Michael's Food Bank.
You've heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a motion to amend Bill 2089.
Is there, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to make a note that these amendments were, you know, made by the Planning Commission, and it was on the condition of their approval. And it only makes sense because there were two districts that were overlooked when we were making it by right, which is the Hillside Zoning District and also the Riverfront Mixed Residential RIV, RM. So those two now will be included as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Councilman, and maybe the clerks, I only see on our yellow copy that there's blue underlining the whereas clauses. And I did look through the table, and I couldn't find the changes.
Yeah, I'm happy to go through it. So the blue, those are actual hyperlinks.
Oh, okay.
In the, yeah, I know, it's confused. So there are hyperlinks, but if you go to page, sorry, it's not numbered. If you go to the use table, 911.02, you'll see that, at the bottom there, under childcare limited means, that's, there's a P that's underlined for permitted use. And that's the, that is the change for, let's see here. Yes, so there's that, and then within the RIV.
It's on the, sorry, just for members, it's on the second page. It's hard, it's hard for us to see.
Yeah.
But it is striked out.
It's like bold.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a small, since it's a use table, it's just literally changing a letter.
So it's.
Bold, underlined, P.
Bolded.
Second page.
P is the new one.
And then the third page, second row, there's an S underlined and also a P underlined. Sorry for these changes. The wrong standing committee was, we overlooked the zoning district when we made the legislation, and I overlooked making the amendments at standing committee, so I apologize.
And I just want to make sure, like, I can, that it's clear now in the final version. And so I couldn't, since I couldn't tell the difference between last week's versions and this week's versions, thank you for catching it, but I can, we can triple check it afterwards. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment by substitution, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been amended.
Abstain.
One abstention. Any further discussion on the bills? If not, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Abstain.
Mrs. Strasburger? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstention.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Mosley presenting on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kohari Mosley presents Bill 154, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for February 14, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 103, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the right, all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the 4th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 28P, Lot 333, 3319 Niagara Street, Council District Number 3, at no cost to the city. Bill 104, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the 20th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 20A, Lot 106, 1461 Chartiers Avenue, Council District Number 2, at no cost to the city. Bill 103, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the 23rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 24F, Lot 102, Chestnut Street, Council District Number 1, at no cost to the city. Bill 106, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 125B, Lots 281 and 283, Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city. Bill 107, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 20th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 19C, Lots 184 and 213, Block 20L, Lot 250, Block 20M, Lots 195, 203, and 228, Block 20R, Lot 17, and Block, Block 42P, Lot 7, 211 and 911, Amher Street, 1042 Lakewood Street, 304 and 320 Lorenz Avenue, 1021 Rue Grandview Street, 1012 Chartiers Avenue, and 1017 Fairdale Street, Council District Number 2, at no cost to the city. Bill 108, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the 24th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 47M, Lot 214, 1815 Rialto Street, Council District Number 1, at no cost to the city. And Bill 109, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 13th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 175B, Lots 57, 58, 60, and 61, Tyoga Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
I'm going to abstain on all bills except for Bill 104, I'm sorry, my glasses are broken, and Bill 107. Thank you. My glasses.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President? On Bills 103, 105, 106, 108, and 109, seven ayes and one abstention. And on Bills 104 and 107, eight ayes.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. The Law Department has requested an executive session for council relative to affirmative litigation. May I please have a motion to schedule the executive session?
Do I move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll work with the clerk to get that scheduled. Anything else from members?
Yeah, can I just real quickly, I just want to thank everyone for the moving, I want to thank Richard Snipe. He does an amazing job moving properties in District 2, and that's one of the things I voted for, is he's renovating a lot of properties in Elliot, and Elliot's been waiting for this. But I also want to thank you, Councilman Wilson, and Councilman Mosley for moving the one property on Chartiers, which will be a fresh produce place finally in, in that community with Farmer Girl Ebbs. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Very exciting, thank you.
Yeah.
We do have a number, two meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February 21st at 9:30 a.m., council will hold a pre-agenda interview on Bill 119 to appoint David Green as Director of PLI, followed by the 10 a.m. Standing Committee Meeting. And then on Thursday, February 22nd at 1 p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 27 as relates to the ratified collective bargaining agreement with the Internal Association of Firefighters Local 1 Agreement. To register to speak at the council meetings and hearings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage, and you also call the clerk's office at 412-255-22138. Motion to excuse the absent member in adjourned, approve the minutes in adjourned meeting.
Do I move?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.